Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for being here. We're going to start it. It's a little bit after seven. We're going to do this to our new elected officials for the city of Worcester. First, I'd like to say, everybody who's an elected official, we're going to ask if you have somebody special here for you that you want to bring up and hold the Bible while you take your oath. That would be wonderful. And we'll get that all set up. But let's start off with Mayor Reynolds. If you want to stand facing the audience. And if you want to stand on this side. And you face the audience and place your hand on the Bible. All right. I, Robert Reynolds.
I, Robert Reynolds.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
That I will uphold the charter.
That I will uphold the charter.
And the ordinances of the city of Worcester.
And the ordinances of the city of Worcester.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As mayor of the city of Worcester.
As the mayor of the city of Worcester.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. All right. Next up, we have President Sanders. You ready? Okay. All right. I want you to face the audience for a little bit. Okay? Hold this. All right. I.
I.
Craig Sanders.
Craig Sanders.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
That I will uphold the charter and ordinances of the city of Worcester.
That I will uphold the charter and ordinances of the city of Worcester.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As the president of City Council of Worcester.
As the president of City Council of Worcester.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. All right. Mr. Gaffey. Ready?
Thanks, Josh.
Here you go. I think you can do it. All right. I.
I.
Lucas Gaffey.
Lucas Gaffey.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
That I will uphold the charter and ordinances of the city of Worcester.
That I will uphold the charter and ordinances of the city of Worcester.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform the duties of my office.
Perform the duties of my office.
As Ward One Council representative.
As Ward Three Council representative.
For the city of Worcester.
For the city of Worcester.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. All right. Mr. Malta. Okay. You should know the drill by now. All right. I.
Christopher Malta.
Christopher Malta.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
That I will uphold.
That I will uphold.
The charter and ordinances.
The charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Worcester.
Of the city of Worcester.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As Ward Three representative.
As Ward Three representative.
For the city of Worcester.
For the city of Worcester.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Mr. Abernathy. Hello. How are you? Big job. Here you go. Turn around to the audience for me. Perfect. All right. I.
I.
Michael Abernathy.
Michael Junior.
Michael Abernathy, Jr. Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
That I will uphold the charter.
That I will uphold the charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the city of Worcester.
Of the city of Worcester.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform the duties of my office.
Perform the duties of my office.
As at-large council representative.
As at-large council representative.
For the city of Worcester.
For the city of Worcester.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. And that's all for the swearing in before the council meeting. Thank you, everybody, so much for coming. Congratulations to all our new elected officials.
All right. Well, good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled Worcester City Council meeting held this Tuesday, January 2nd. Tonight's meeting is in council chambers and livestreamed on YouTube and it is after, well, it's close enough to 7:30. Ms. Hamilton, would you, as clerk of council, please call the roll?
Mr. Abernathy.
Here.
Pardon my voice. I'm sorry. Mr. Gaffey.
Here.
Ms. Knappick.
Here.
Mr. Malta.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Ms. Warden.
Here.
All right. We have a quorum and a general remain is presented. At this time, I'll ask we stand and join the members of City Council presiding the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Just as a reminder, which I had missed, our next council meeting will be on Tuesday, January 16th due to the Martin Luther King Jr. holiday on Monday, the 15th. With that, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from December 18th?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Myers, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Abernathy, please call the roll, please.
I think that was by affirmation.
Is it?
In favor.
Okay.
And then I'll lose a vote.
All right. For all that want to approve the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We'll move on to communications from our old administration and our new mayor, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, happy to be here. Looking forward to working with you within the coming year. So far, it's almost two days in and things have gone smoothly, so I don't think anything can go wrong. Yesterday, I did come by, tried to keep Bob to make sure I could get in the door. It worked. I didn't go inside the door, but I found I could do it. Today, I severely tested the patience of our IT department. That's a working process that's going to continue. Not much to report at this point. I want to thank everybody that's helping with transition, Mr. Reynolds, who was here. They've done a lot since the general election, helping get on board. Mr. Montgomery, the HR staff, the IT staff. I really appreciate that. Looking forward to working with you all, serving our community. I think we all recognize this is a great place and we have much to be proud of, but we've also got room for improvement and we should always be striving to be better than we are. So with that, I'll just turn it over to the legislature chairman.
I didn't really have much to share. I know Andre and I each have a memo that you should have received, one on the fee schedule for, I tried to explain a little bit more for him to remember, that we got something, all of our fees are in fee schedule and so by ordinance, if there can be any changes, we submit those to the council. And there's nothing, there's no comments in thirty days. We typically do that around this time, after the budget passes and we know what we can put in for supplies or things, so those are the, we missed you last week.
I'm required by ordinance to report what's called Link and Boss Program and I reported that we had no activity. Cool or nothing for your work.
No news is good news.
And so then, just to clarify, Joel or Mr. Montgomery, then, so the, related to the fee schedule, at this point, there's nothing that we need to do to enact that at this point. It will just automatically fall into place on February 1st per the memo. Okay? So this, the comment I would make to the rest of council, to the council members, is at this point, if you have any questions, concerns, or whatnot over that, please direct that to Mr. Montgomery ASAP because at this point, like you say, it will become effective All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, administration, for the update and communications. And at this point, we will, our next item of, next item on the agenda this evening is our council organization. And in light of the fact that, as we well know, Mr. Reynolds is no longer on council and is now the mayor, we do need to fill the rest of his unexpired term. And at this point, I would ask if anyone on council has a nomination or a motion to fill that seat.
President Sanders, I would be honored to nominate Stephen Husey to fill the position vacated by Mr. Reynolds for City Council.
All right.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Knappick. All right. With that, Ms. Hamilton, if you would call the roll, call vote, please.
Mr. Abernathy.
Yes.
Ms. Warden.
Yes.
Mr. Malta.
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey.
Yes.
Ms. Knappick.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Mr. Husey, you are now on City Council. If you want to, you and your family want to step up and we'll get you sworn in and get you seated and we'll keep going to work.
Okay. We're going to do this just like we did when we swore in the other members. You're going to throw out and hold the Bible for us. And we stand in the center. Turn it out to the audience. Turn it out to the audience. There we go. And please place your right hand. I.
I.
Stephen, is it Husey?
Husey.
Husey. Stephen Husey.
Stephen Husey.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
That I will uphold the charter.
That I will uphold the charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the city of Worcester.
Of the city of Worcester.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As at-large council representative.
As at-large council representative.
For the city of Worcester.
For the city of Worcester.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
All right. Mr. Husey, congratulations. Welcome.
Thank you.
We'll continue on with the meeting here. Our next portion of council organization is to approve our president pro temporary appointment, which at this point, I have nominated Mr. Myers. And at this point, Ms. Hamilton, if you would call the roll, call vote on that also, please.
Do you need a second?
Oh, I guess you do need a second.
I'll second.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Abernathy.
Yes.
Ms. Warden.
Yes.
Mr. Malta.
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey.
Yes.
Ms. Knappick.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
I'll abstain.
Mr. Husey.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Congratulations, Mr. Myers. I don't, I don't.
Don't miss a meeting.
I don't plan on, I don't plan on missing any meetings, but.
Need a ride? I'll come get you.
Only way I might need a ride is if I'm out of town and something happens. So, yeah, okay. I'll keep that in mind. That's true. That's true. All right. Our last council organization is to approve our committee assignments, which at this point, I know were sent out last week and they are in front of you this evening. And with that, if I have, if I can have a motion from council to accept the, or to approve the council assignments or committee assignments.
So move to approve. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jen. I'll take the first for a second.
All right. Ms. Warden makes the motion.
Second.
Ms. Knappick, second. Ms. Hamilton, if you'll call the roll, please.
Ms. Warden. Yes.
Mr. Malta.
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey.
Yes.
Ms. Knappick.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Husey.
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Move on. Next item will be petitions communications from the public. We have a liquor control request to transfer license from Red Rover LLC to Parmar Oil at 1058 West Old Lincoln Way. If, Ms. Hamilton, if you'll read that.
Liquor control request to transfer a license from Red Rover LLC to Parmar Oil at 1058 West Old Lincoln Way.
And with this, we have been given three options from the state to either have a hearing held in Columbus, in our county seat, or to not request any type of hearing. Do I, do I have a motion for which one of those options, please?
Move to waive hearing.
Second.
Is that Mr. Abernathy? Okay. Do we call a roll on that?
I think we do.
Okay. Roll, call a vote, please.
Mr. Abernathy.
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey.
Yes.
Ms. Knappick.
Yes.
Mr. Malta.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Warden.
Yes.
Mr. Husey.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next, we have communications from the public, which we have, we have two people that have signed up. Shannon Waller and Matt Mariola both want to speak regarding the agenda item of the CRA for the Food Sphere Local Roots. You guys might as well, I mean, whoever wants to speak first, you might as well, we'll do that now and at that point, since it's, since it's the last item on the agenda tonight, I mean, if you want to stay, that's great, but at this point, if you want to speak now, then you don't have to wait for the entire meeting.
Come on, Sharon. You've done this before.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I don't know that it's on. All right. There you go. There is now a green light. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Shannon Waller. I'm here as the executive director of Main Street Worcester. Also, I am a trustee for Food Sphere and I was on their steering committee, so I'm very familiar with the organization. However, I am here on behalf of Main Street Worcester. My executive committee did consider this CRA and how it might affect the downtown and they gave me their blessing to support this legislation. Local Roots has been really crucial to the downtown as an anchor business and they've grown so amazingly in the past 10 years. It's brought a lot of people to our downtown. It's been great for the economy. And when their lease became towards the end of its term, there was a lot of consternation on behalf of Main Street Worcester, like, can we keep them downtown? So we were very excited that they did find a new home right across the street, which will still bring people, their customers, to downtown and continue to serve as that anchor. And the CRA reinvestment legislation really is a good fit for this kind of a project. Food Sphere is a nonprofit. Local Roots is a co-op. This really is a community organization that serves a lot of local entrepreneurs and will really help with the growth and sustainability of our community. The, Local Roots has purchased the building. We have it. We have to figure out how much utilization we can get out of the resources that we have. So Food Sphere is doing a lot of fundraising. The capital campaign is on. The amount of money that we can bring to bear will determine how grave an impact this business will have on the community. So we even in the strategic planning, look at three tiers of, okay, if we get this basic threshold, we can do this much. You know, we have the middle stage and we have the, oh, wow, now we can have a whole Solarium that has this wonderful event space. So that information is available. That's part of the capital campaign. So this CRA will really determine how far this mission can go. And the Food Sphere mission is to develop local food producers and food-based items in Worcester. And we have seen even in just some of the businesses that have come out of Local Roots, Woo Town Bagels started in Local Roots, The Curry Pot started in Local Roots. These businesses get started, get their traction in Local Roots and then they go out and grow and graduate into bigger businesses that tend to want to stay downtown. So this is a great opportunity for us to continue to grow this wonderful organization. And on behalf of Main Street Worcester, we fully support that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Nice to speak in front of you. Thanks for your time. I don't know a lot of you, so I'm Matt Mariola. I'm a teacher at the College of Worcester. I've been at the college for 15 years, also raised in the community as well. I'm the president of Food Sphere. We're an all volunteer board of directors and I was elected as president about a year ago. And so I just want to maybe zoom out and just give you a little bit of a broader picture about what Food Sphere is all about to kind of understand this project. Shannon mentioned Curry Pot and Woo Town Bagels. They're two of the big kind of success cases that have come out of the building of the local food infrastructure here in Wayne County. We want to support our local farmers and our local food entrepreneurs. They're success stories, but in some ways, they came not because of, but in spite of the core mission of Local Roots. They came about because those entrepreneurs approached Local Roots and said, oh, Local Roots, you do local food. This is what you do, right? Can you help us move our businesses to the next level? And the staff and administration of Local Roots said, sure, it's not really what we do. We run a market, but we want to help local food entrepreneurs. So they kind of went above and beyond to make that happen. That process, though, led to the formation of a steering committee to say, look, this isn't really what Local Roots does. Fundamentally, Local Roots runs a market. We need a different organization to help these kinds of local food entrepreneurs. That's how Food Sphere was born. So Food Sphere mission, broadly speaking, is to support and catalyze local food entrepreneurs. What we're doing right now is we've partnered with Local Roots to be in the middle of this capital campaign to buy, expand, and renovate the building we're right on until it very recently was. So I think the one thing I just want to emphasize in terms of the CRA is we're in the middle of this fundraising campaign. This entire project is being driven by fundraising, both philanthropic dollars from local foundations, our local community members, and grants. Now, that process, of course, is very, we don't know if the grants are going to come in or not. We put the applications out and we wait for them to come back in. So it is a touch-and-go process. Every dime of the fundraising is going towards the renovation and the purchase of the building. Not a single dollar of the fundraising is going towards operating funds of any of the organizations. So it's all for the revitalization of this, I guess you'd call it historic building, not super historic, but semihistoric building in downtown Worcester, which we believe will raise the value of the building. And so, as Shannon said, you know, every little bit counts. And so we're investing or requesting the CRA, one, because it fits the vision of the CRA, but also because it's very much part of our fundraising effort to be able to leverage every bit of financial help we can. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We have, next item would be committee reports and public hearings, but since we have had no committee meetings and at this point, we've not had any public hearings, we'll move into unfinished business, which at this point, we have a second reading on Resolution 2023-86. That will be introduced by Ms. Knappick, but first, we'll have Ms. Hamilton read the resolution.
Resolution number 2023-86, a resolution imposing a moratorium on the granting or processing of permits for any building, structure, use, or change of use that would enable cultivation, processing, or retail sale of marijuana within the city of Worcester and allowing for immediate enactment.
Ms. Knappick, the floor is yours.
Yes. Thank you very much. This is a matter that came up at the last council meeting. As we all know, in November, the voters passed the law that allows Ohio to have recreational marijuana. However, before that really can take effect, substantially take effect, the state legislature has to come up with rules and policies and formats as to how things will actually run, how that process will take place. And by way of history, when Ohio legalized medicinal marijuana, the city did the same thing. We had, we had a moratorium until the state figured out exactly what it was going to do. We frankly have to wait for the state to do anything anyhow because without any rules, no one can do anything, including the growers, the buyers, the sellers, the, anything. So, and we had some further discussion last week, our last meeting, about some other things that we'd like the city to look into, and I'm assuming that you are doing that with respect to being able to prohibit that smoking out of doors in public settings and that type of thing. So I would like to leave this on second reading to let our new council members kind of get up to speed with what we're talking about, this piece of legislation. We put a moratorium until the earlier of either July 31st, 2024, or until the state legislature enacts changes, or enacts their policies, or we change any, the codified ordinances of the city of Worcester to address these issues. So, as I said, I'd like to leave it on second reading so the new council members can become a bit more familiar with it.
Okay. Very good. Okay, very good. So Resolution 2023-86 has had its second reading, and we will move on to new business, which at this point will be Resolution 2024-01, which will be introduced by Mr. Huse. It is an item that is budgeted, so therefore will not need, we can approve it immediately at this point because it's a budgeted item. So with that, I'll let Ms. Hamilton read the legislation.
Resolution number 2024-01, a resolution authorizing the director of administration to expend additional funds for landscaping services from Bushwhack Landscaping and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Huse, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a pretty straightforward resolution. The city contracted with Bushwhack Landscaping to do some landscaping around the city, some maintenance. You can see here weed control, some pre-emergent application, mulching, pruning, that kind of stuff to button up our public properties for the winter. But we went over the $50,000 threshold, and we're just looking to pay the bills here on this one. Mr. Denny, anything else to add on this?
Yeah, you're very detailed on that. This is an oversight on our behalf, and just apologize for that, but we got some checks and balances in place so that doesn't happen anymore.
Okay, well, with that, Mr. Huse, do you have a motion on this piece of legislation?
Motion to adopt.
All right, a motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Abernathy. Ms. Hamilton, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Huse?
Yes.
Ms. Knappick?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
All right. Resolution 2024-01 has been approved. Thank you all. Move on to Resolution 2024-02, which will be introduced by Mr. Malta, and it will require three readings unless he decides to move at the third and final this evening. Before you can give us the lowdown on this, Mr. Malta, I'll have Ms. Hamilton read the legislation.
Resolution number 2024-02, a resolution accepting grant funds from the Ohio Public Works Commission for emergency replacement of an anaerobic digester cover and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Malta, the floor is yours.
I don't have a whole lot on this issue. We're just receiving money from the state to replace the cover on the digester. If there's any other input, I don't think there needs to be, since we're taking some money.
All right, so do you have a motion for us this evening?
I move to, for immediate enactment.
Okay, so you would motion to suspend the rules of council and place this on third and final reading?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Knappick? Ms. Hamilton, you call the roll, please.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Ms. Knappick?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Huse?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
All right. And with that, I would assume, Mr. Malta, that you have a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-02?
I would like to move to adopt.
All right, very good. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Hamilton, you call the roll, please.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Ms. Knappick?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Huse?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, next item of business, Ordinance 2024-01, which will also be an item that will require three readings unless council so desires to move it along from that standpoint. It will be introduced by Mr. Abernathy, and before that, we'll have Ms. Hamilton read it for us, please.
Ordinance number 2024-01, an ordinance establishing the salary of city council members and president for the terms beginning on or after January 1, 2025.
Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
Pretty simple, just setting the salaries for incoming city council, future president of council, and the mayor. Mr. Scavelli, anything you want to add to that one?
I'll turn it over to Mr. Montgomery, and he can, or I can jump in. So we have a compensation commission that is established by our charter. The purpose of the compensation commission is to be an independent board to review what the salaries of elected officials should be. They recently met, and they have made suggestions for changes to council member salaries and the president of council, and to keep the salary of the mayor the same as it was previously. That is what is being recommended to council to pass. Council cannot pass increases for salaries in their own term, and so these would not take effect until after January 1, 2025. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I just had one item. There was a previous piece of legislation that established the, four years ago, that did council and the mayor, and it had, in that legislation, established the mayor's compensation that would go up annually by two and a half percent, or the average of the, whatever the collective bargaining units got, whichever was lower. So the compensation committee, and that's just meant to happen every year. So the compensation committee decided not to change that. So that salary progression, two and a half, or the lower of the average, will continue to happen every year. So there's no legislation relative to the mayor's salary, because they just said, leave it as is. So this is just for council.
And if I could insert one thing here for clarification, this for any term beginning after January 1, 2025. So none of you are going to get the benefits of this change if it is approved. There'll be future council members and president of council that will see this increase. So I think council understands that. We'll make sure the public understands that, that none of you are voting for an increase for yourselves.
Okay. Well, thank you for the clarifications. Mr. Abernathy, do you have a motion for us?
To suspend the rules? You want to pass today, or you want to have it?
Right now.
You going to motion to suspend the rules and council and place this on third and final reading?
Yeah, I'll motion it.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
Gaffey? Ms. Hamilton, call the roll, please, on the motion to suspend the rules?
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Ms. Knappick?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Huse?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
All right. And with that, then, assuming, Mr. Abernathy, you want to make a motion to adopt?
Motion.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Gaffey? Ms. Hamilton, call the roll, please.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Ms. Knappick?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Huse?
No.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
All right. Okay, so the motion does, is approved. Thank you, council. And at this point, we'll move on to our next piece of legislation, which is Resolution 2024-03. That will be presented by Mr. Huse. And before he enlightens us on this, Ms. Hamilton, if you'll read the...
Resolution number 2024-03, a resolution authorizing the director of administration to purchase a dump truck and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Huse, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pretty simple resolution before us here. The city uses a lot of dump trucks. We have a need for dump trucks for leaf collection, snow ice removal, just a bunch of stuff that Mr. Denny's crew does throughout the year, and we are in need of a new one. We have one 2015, 2005 international that's kind of exceeded its useful life, and we're looking to get a new one. Mr. Denny, was there anything else to add on the dump truck?
Yeah, just for example, the usage of our trucks. This summer, we paved many streets this summer, and we placed about 6,000 ton asphalt. So in order to do that, we have a lot of trucking. I'm just, I'm happy to say that we were able to drive about 7,200 miles this summer without an accident. So that's back and forth to Miami, Florida, three times. So kudos to our drivers, and it's also safe equipment that we can run up and down the road. So yeah, this just keeps our fleet in line, so thank you for this opportunity.
And Mr. Denny, when do you anticipate being able to receive the dump truck?
Yeah, this should be delivered this summer, late summer, to us, and we were fortunate enough to find one. It's actually built the exact way that we like it, the chassis, chassis that we're familiar with in the Kenworth, and the build, they're waiting on us. So I said, well, if we have first opportunity, we could get the council, we'd be here. So they're kind of waiting for us to give them a PO, and Andre's opened up the PO process here today. So I'm sure tomorrow, we can start that process.
Very good. Mr. Huse, do you have a motion for us?
A motion to suspend the rules.
Unnecessary.
Unnecessary motion to adopt.
All right, very good. A motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Myers? Ms. Hamilton, if you'll call the roll to adopt.
Ms. Knappick?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Huse?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Get it on order. All right, and our last piece of legislation this evening is Ordinance 2024-02, which will be sponsored by Mr. Abernathy. And before he again regales us on this piece, Ms. Hamilton, if you'll read it, please.
Ordinance number 2024-02, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Food Sphere Corp. and Worcester Local Foods Cooperative, Inc. for community reinvestment area tax incentives with Boo Bears Brew LLC and Ride On Worcester Bicycles, Inc., authorized as tenants for immediate enactment.
Mr. Abernathy, the floor is yours.
All right, well, I think we heard quite a bit about that earlier. Jonathan, anything you want to add?
Sure, thank you very much. This seeks a 75% 10-year exemption with a waiver for the two years for every 10-year, I'm sorry, the two years' performance for every one-year exemption as we have in place for our buildings that are being rehabbed in our community reinvestment area. We additionally received supporting correspondence for the project through the College of Worcester, College, the Ohio State University, College of Food Agriculture and Environmental Science, Main Street Worcester, Wayne County Commissioners, which were the previous leaseholders for the applicants moving forward, and also the Wayne Center for the Arts and the Wayne County Farm Bureau. We additionally had a unanimous recommendation from the Worcester Growth Corporation with the Worcester City School District representative having provided a vote and recommendation for the CRA treatment. Specifically, this building is down about 40% of its value from where it had been at its peak over the last 20 years. So this is a structure that, even though there was some active use to it, it has experienced some pressures that have caused its valuation, and therefore, the revenue that it can produce to come down. Being that these are both nonprofit missions under Ohio law, they are seeking this treatment because it basically provides, when it was discussed earlier how donations and grants are being requested, it basically provides them with a 22% bump. We calculate in terms of the power to, the power of those funds coming in, because essentially, this exemption that's being requested would shave approximately that much of a cost off of the long-term operations. It allows those donor dollars and government funds, if they come to fruition through USDA, to be able to be 22% stronger, and therefore, more likely to get us to the point where we can see this building rehabilitated. And our applicants are still with us here. We also just note that there are two tenants who are authorized, and the reason why we have that is that under Ohio law, anytime we have an employed individual inside a tax-exempted building through one of these programs, there are certain provisions that have to be met in terms of their requirements to follow nondiscrimination, to provide reporting information to the city so that we can make sure they're following the guidelines. So that's why you see them in there as well. So in total, we have four parties that are looking to make a pretty sizable investment in our downtown, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Are we going to see any growth in employee counts through this whole process as they continue to expand?
Their intent is to add employment. So for a total of 16 full-time equivalents, that would be adding two additional full-time staff to the six full-time staff that they presently have, with the remainder being part-time. So yes, there's a planned increase of employment activity at that location as a result.
Okay.
And it's tied directly to the CRA, to the adoption of the CRA then, as well?
Correct. Well, I mean, the employment growth would be part of a CRA agreement.
Correct. So I guess where I'm going with this is, as we've seen in the past with other CRAs, yet for some reason that they have not met their criteria at that point, then they are subject to...
Having to repay.
Whatever, yeah, whatever, yeah.
Yeah.
Just to make that, just to put that out there for everybody if they're unaware of it.
Yeah, Section 8 of the CRA does stipulate that they're going to add two new full-time employees in their application.
I was just going to point out, which would be great, but it's going to be also such a, the intangibles that are there, the growth that it can bring to the community otherwise by fostering more food-related industry in the community, which is why I'm sure that we've seen so much broad support for this, you know, we're an agricultural community. So it's nice to see that. And I think there'll be intangible rewards that the city and the county get as a result of this expansion in CRA. And they won't be, we won't be able to look back and say, oh, yes, two more employees for them, as much as we might down the road be able to say five more businesses for us.
Mr. Abernathy, do you have a...
A motion to suspend rules?
Did you have a question, Mr. Huse?
Yeah. Jonathan, I was struggling with this project a little bit. I was trying to rack my brain on any times a CRA has been used where it creates a vacant building in its wake. Is that something that typically we want to do as a city, or do we have any, does the county have any plans for that building once Local Roots vacates?
So the building is government-county owned, and the county commissioners were among the correspondents who provided a greater support for the project. My understanding is that there are a couple of different possibilities for that site. In particular, however, and I'd ask the applicants to correct me if I'm wrong, I understand that there will be a period of time in which the applicants will continue to reside within the structure. We shared in our summary that the situation here is that we do have a company that is locating from one structure to another across the street. That's happening because of lack of space and the inability to grow and expand the missions. And that is something, as Ms. Waller shared, they have structured, they have purchased the building. We disclosed it in the application as a relocation because this has not happened yet. The issue of the project is how much do they rehab the structure in order to have that occur? We have had situations where we've had, actually, multiple entities leave leased spaces and go into new spaces that they own and control that we have approved. That would be, the philosophy behind that also is not only is that reinvestment taking place, but a company is going from a leased location into a location that they have ownership of. That makes them stronger, more sustainable, and likely to have a permanent home in our downtown, which is why we have supported those in the past. So this would fit that mold where you're going, again, from a structure that, you know, you're going to be held to, you know, a leased situation into a facility that you now control and own and can make that permanent investment in and can call it your permanent home.
Okay, so council's not creating a new precedent by...
No. No, we've done this several times. One that comes to mind would be ILEXO, they had leased a, they vacated a leased premises in our city, and they went into a old pub. The time was valued at $75,000. That building had also lost its value. And that project's been remarkably successful. They've increased their employment goals beyond what they committed, and we've watched that structure grow in valuation to almost half a million dollars today with what they've done. So we're kind of hoping to see that trend continue as this is basically modeling after the past work that we've done in the past.
I think you brought up a good point, Mr. Huse, and I think that, and that was a great response. I'm really eager to see this happen because I think in addition to giving Local Roots and Food Sphere and even Ride On the ability to thrive, which they've been able to do in their leased space, this also opens up another facility for another business to come in and thrive in our downtown. So I mean, I think this is kind of the idea. So, I mean, I think this is kind of the ideal situation. You've, you know, built a business there, and it's done, it's been so successful that you're able to move on and purchase a building, which is, I think, probably every small business's goal. And so hopefully we can see another turnaround of this type through the existing Local Roots building and the business in the future.
Okay.
Thank you.
Myers?
Yeah, I support this legislation 100%, but I'm a member and I shop regularly, I was there today. So I do shop regularly in support of what they're doing in the mission. It is, in the past, though, the administration has said that any project that is going to go forward without our CRA money, we usually recommend it against. They've obviously purchased the building in their fundraising, so they're going to go forward. So it's a little bit contrary to what we normally would hear. So I appreciate you supporting this this time because, again, I support it and I'm glad to see this going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that is an interesting point.
I don't believe that this project is going forward as presented without the exemption. If either Mr. Shriver or Mr. Malley would like to speak to that.
Please. Yeah, please. Yeah, just give us your name.
Hi, my name's Adam Schwerdeman. I'm the Executive Director of Local Roots. Thank you for your time. Just to highlight on that point, what picture we tried to paint earlier a little bit is that we have a fundraising target that we have set. We are happy to have passed with unanimous approval in front of the zoning board and the planning commission to set plans forward in place, but we are still in architectural design phase right now. So we are submitting building drawings and looking at different scenarios, and right now, we haven't purchased equipment yet, we haven't finalized that design yet. So our hope is to grow the impact of the organization as substantially as we possibly can, but we also don't want to kneecap the organization, taking on debt that we can't service, you know, potential, I don't even want to say it, would risk of bankruptcy later in life because we inappropriately managed funds early on. So our hope is that with, you know, approval of this, if you would grace us with that, that we would be able to take those funds, reinvest that back into the building, build a bigger, stronger building for the organization to flourish long-term, and then we can gain those real estate tax dollars back in the long-term after the improvements are made.
What would this project look like if you didn't get it?
Well, we don't know, I guess I would say. We do have a lot of grant applications out right now, but there are kind of three phases that we're looking at. The scenario planning, the most modest scenario would be no new construction of the existing facility of Local Roots right now, and its current space at 140 South Palm, that's a 9,000-square-foot operation. Ride On is a 12,000-square-foot on existing box. So when we add in incremental office space, a little bit extra storage, Ride On has a sublet claim in there, what we see is that we really don't have any more market space for new producers, any more kitchen space to be able to grow into. That would also be retrofitting the existing building to put in a new commercial kitchen, which makes our dollars less efficient with that much plumbing, electric, HVAC, all sorts of things you really need to spend your dollars most efficiently, new construction of that space. The second option would be, it's kind of our Goldilocks we're hoping on, is that we would put 4,000 square feet of new commercial kitchen space on the south side of the building in between the existing footprint of Ride On and the Wayne Center for the Arts on the south side. There is a grassy spot, so that would be on new construction. The third scenario, which we're hopeful for, but we're not sure that we can obtain, again, depending on grant funding and CRA and all sorts of other mix of funding uses, would be to add a 2,000-square-foot seating area, event center, to the southeast quadrant of that facility so that we could host conferences, large groups of people, we'd have a 200-person seating capacity. And we have design plans kind of set right now to potentially rough in construction for that if we were able to afford that in the long-term. But in short answer to your question, there's still a lot of variables on the funding side which would determine the level of construction we can take on.
So I guess I would flip back as well. So if you get, if this goes through, your full plan is you're going to be able to execute all this with what we're proposing tonight?
Yes.
Jonathan, if I can, do you, what kind of increase in property value would you, and I know this is a wild kind of guess, but I'd be curious to your anticipation on property value down the road that would be additionally beneficial to the community?
So with the structure, again, having lost its value, that creates a depreciating pressure on the structures immediately around it. When we do run the analysis, what we're finding is that typically newer structures, where structures that are rehabbed, can get a valuation bump of up to $80 a square foot, or if it's brand-new, more sophisticated real estate, which some of this could be because of the nature of the equipment they would have to have, we added a factor of $110,000, I'm sorry, $110 a square foot. Right now, the value of that structure is hovering around $25, $30 a square foot. So the ideal renovation, if it were to take place, it could bump the building's value up from $400,000 to potentially 1.3. So with that, that takes your tax obligation from eight grand a year to 18,000 to 27,000 a year. So what they're looking for is an exemption, it's worth about $17,000 to $20,000, I apologize, it's worth about 35,000 to 47,000 grand a year for 10 years. That's how they get that 22% bump in terms of lowering the amount of money that they need to finance and pull together with donor funds in order to make the project go forward. So this makes it 22% more likely long-term as that exemption, but immediately what happens is we do see, for the community standpoint, if we're looking at the fiscal side of it, we go from a revenue of 8,200 a year to roughly 17,000 to 20,000 of taxes that will be paid, provided that the project's able to move forward as planned in those first 10 years. And then after that period is up, after that 10 years, we would expect to see an annual, reach that annual obligation of 35,000 to 47,000. So that then is revenue that is largely going to the schools, a good chunk of it does go to our city general fund as well, and also Wayne County to fund their services. So it's an impactful change for that area where there's an immediate return, and hopefully the thing that it does immediately also is it alleviates that depreciating pressure of the structures that are nearby.
I just have one other question. I know that when we were talking about the new comprehensive plan, that whole area down there was talked about as an arts district or a potential arts district. How would this potentially fit into that?
So this geographically serves as the main gateway into that district along Walnut Street. That particular corridor, I know that our development team, we've worked in the past on a couple of different pursuits and still will intend to in the future to help lighten up that corridor, looking at improvements to Walnut Street going down past the Wayne Center for the Arts. We had their letter of support too, indicating that they felt that this helped to support their mission, is they're looking to also undertake a major investment at their structure catty corner from this further south. But its geographic location, having the ability to generate additional economic activity in that locale and bring in traffic and bring in hopefully foot traffic further south into this area, makes the opportunity for an arts district a little bit more viable because now we're one block closer to the arts center, which also wants to have its own outdoor programming, and so we get these, just this human activity that is more apparent, more out, more connecting, and helping to, help facilitate a positive environment that makes that redevelopment of the whole neighborhood more attractive for future developers.
I understand that. It would be, it would be, I wonder if I know Local Roots has local artists who sell their things there, which is where I buy all my Christmas presents. But if somehow that could be highlighted too as part of that arts district and have maybe, you know, some coordination with the Wayne Center for the Arts together so that, you know, one of the things we also heard on the Comprehensive Planet Committee was, you know, more places in that arts area for people to go with families, and I think this would be one of those, potentially one of those places. So, okay, thank you.
Mr. Malley, I've got, I mean, while I don't have a vote on this at all, I guess I want to make sure, I don't guess, I want to make sure everyone's clear because we, this, to me, this is a procedural point that maybe, I want to make sure that I'm not misunderstanding what you said, so, and misunderstanding how this has been presented to council, but at this point, so the Food Sphere people, the applicant on this CRA has already purchased the property that they're planning to renovate.
Correct.
So at this point, how many other projects have we had in the city of Worcester that were denied CRA because of the fact that they said they didn't need the money or that they had already proceeded to move forward?
There are two, or there are three that I am aware of, however, this project, this specific project is for the rehabilitation, expansion of this area, as Mr. Schwerdeman just shared, what they're looking to do with this relocation.
Well, I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's a bad thing, I'm just saying, though, that is that, I guess I want to make the point to the rest of council that at this point, if that's an issue of, if that's an issue that has been, that's not been properly dealt with, then, because in past experiences, I know that we had cases where they were denied because of that involvement, and so I'm, at this point, I just want to make, I want to make it perfectly clear to the council members that at this point, that's not going to be a limiting factor, even though it seems somewhat counterintuitive from the standpoint if it was limiting previously, how it wouldn't be limiting now.
The factor that we look at is, in terms of whether or not we make a recommendation, is if the project is going to move forward without the exemption, then we would not be recommending it. As we look at the mathematics of this, we don't have confidence that it can move forward as presented without community support. So that is where the recommendation in this case comes in because...
But they've already made steps to proceed without the CRA, though?
No, they have not made steps to proceed with this expansion.
But they...
I'm sorry.
But they purchased the building.
Yes, most of our projects, there's ownership. You need to have an owner of the structure in order to have the project move forward. So the majority of our projects, there's typically going to be ownership of the property or, especially in the case of a rehab, you're going to have probably longer-term ownership with that. Occasionally, we do get projects where there's a real estate, and we see this more on the basic sector side, where you have a proposal to purchase that's contingent on tax incentive, that occurs as well. In this particular instance, is Local Roots moving to the structure? That is their plan, that happens with or without the exemption. The question before the city is, does the addition and does the rehabilitation take place that allows for additional employment growth take place? That is what is being questioned.
Could I add one, anyway?
Certainly.
Yeah, I just wanted to state this in full transparency, especially...
Sure, please, still.
Yes, yes, thank you. Just if I could provide a little bit of clarity, again, Adam Schwerdeman, Executive Director of Local Roots, thanks. So because some of you are members, I can share this, but also in full transparency of the point of the CRA and the need for the funding, to date, we have secured a mortgage to purchase the property. So purchase price, public record, if you'd like to, we have purchased the property, made a down payment on that, and then we received a little less than $700,000 total between philanthropic funds and grant funding. So we have a mortgage, purchased property, we have about $700,000 of funding.
Can I interrupt? Is the loan closed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. The budgetary estimates that we've received from contractors for the full project cost are ranging somewhere, you know, north and south of $3 million. So we are far off from, you know, a project that is financially secure at this point. So that help is needed, if that is helpful.
Yes, thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to just clarify, at least my personal perspective and perhaps others on council, we support the project, I think there is some question on council as to the consistency of the administration and their recommendations on this, and I think that might be something we look at with council at a future time and not tie it to this particular CRA, because again, I do support this. So I'm going to recommend we take a look at the process at a future time.
Are we nervous that we're setting a precedent, though?
We're not.
I don't think, Mr. Abernathy, I think the way it's being presented is kind of, the way they're doing it is, the building is being purchased and they're going to move, what they're applying for is funds to add on to the building or add on to a kitchen. So that part may or will not happen without additional support. So it is a two-part process, the way they've positioned this. So although I do have some concerns over the CRA process, as I've mentioned in the past, I think I can support this because, again, the fact that they purchased the building is part one, they have that funds and the financing secured for that. Part two is what they're applying for, and that's to add on to the building, which they won't do if they don't get the funding, at the kitchen and the conference and meeting room space. Those are the wish-to-haves that they need funding for. So it's kind of like two parts, and we'll get confused, but part one has happened, but part two is what they're saying is on the, kind of on the decision tree there.
Okay.
And this is not a precedent, precedent setting, we have done this before.
Exactly what I was going to say, and I think maybe there's a confusion between some CRAs that were, you know, that were asked for for Greenfield, which we do that sometimes as well, and I think those are probably the ones that we're familiar with when maybe, you know, property was already owned, but maybe somebody went ahead and broke ground, you know, they're already committed to building, the building. That's typically when maybe there hasn't been a recommendation from administration because they already owned, we weren't looking at whether they owned the property or not, most of them already owned the property, but then they went ahead and broke ground and started building the building. Those are the ones I can remember. As far as downtown goes, in our reinvestment area, council's done that many, many, many times over the last 20 years. Most of those buildings were owned by an owner, they bought them already, they came and said, hey, I want to renovate this and put a restaurant on the first floor, you know, and residential on the top two floors, and overwhelmingly, council has approved those, very, very, very similar, almost exactly the same as what this is right now.
Out of the background for that is we always take a look at treatment of CRA as a last resort in order to enable the project to move forward.
Thank you. So with that, Mr. Abernathy, do you have a...
I will stand by my original motion to suspend rules.
All right, so suspend rules. Council placed this on third and final reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Knappich, second. Ms. Hamilton, if you call the roll, please.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
All right, rules have been suspended. Mr. Abernathy, do you have a motion for it?
Motion.
Motion to adopt. Is there a second? Mr. Meyer, seconds. Ms. Hamilton?
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Husey?
Yes.
Mr. Abernathy?
Yes.
Ms. Warden?
Yes.
Mr. Malta?
Yes.
Mr. Gaffey?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
All right, ordinance 2024-02 has been approved. All right, very good. We've moved on to the miscellaneous portion, and Ms. Hamilton, we did not have anyone sign up for miscellaneous, did we? Okay, well, now we get to hear from the rest of council members, so I guess at this point, just from a time standpoint, we'll start with our newest member, Mr. Husey. Do you have anything to add this evening?
Thank you for your votes tonight. I hope everybody had a happy new year and looking forward to getting into it.
All right, sounds good. Mr. Abernathy?
Nothing to add, Mr. President.
Ms. Knappich?
I just want to say, welcome back to everybody, welcome to our new members. Obviously, everybody came well-prepared. Good luck to the new mayor, and welcome to your spot as well, and I'm looking forward to working with everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Gaffey?
Yeah, I would just say likewise, I'm thankful to be here, honored... Yeah, I would just say likewise, I'm thankful to be here, honored to be able to sit here and deal with city business. I look forward to working with each and every person on the council and the administration. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Warden?
Happy New Year to everybody. Welcome to our new members, and great job today on, you know, introducing legislation at your very first meeting. I'm impressed because I think I was nervous for, I still am. Great job. So that's all, thank you.
Mr. Malta?
I would also like to wish everybody a Happy New Year. Thank you all for coming. That's all I have tonight.
Mr. Myers?
Thank you. I just want to say thanks to Shannon, Matt, and Adam for coming tonight and supporting the CRA. We look forward to seeing, making the move and all the fun stuff you guys are going to be working on again. Full support of what you guys are doing down there. I want to welcome all our new council members. I look forward to getting to know you guys. And although I've known this participant for quite some time, I do want to say congratulations to Mayor Reynolds. Thank you, and welcome aboard.
All right, well...
Motion adjourned.
All right. Motion adjourned. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you all.